Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First off, our apologies. We had an executive session where we discussed a real estate matter and a legal matter, and we actually still didn't get to one of our other issues that we had to. So it was a very packed agenda on the executive session. So our apologies to that. This is the November 14, 2016 meeting, November, Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. And to open our meeting, Mr. Secretary, if you would please take the roll.
Certainly, Mr. D'Amelio.
Here.
McCloskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Oliva.
Here.
And Mr. Connell.
Here. We're honored this evening to have Reverend Ryan Whitley of St. George Episcopal Church to lead us in benediction. Will everyone please rise we can?
Good evening, everyone. I thank you for having us. Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly ask you that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues. End you with the spirit of wisdom, those to whom in your name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to your law, we may show forth your praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in you to fail. All of this we ask in God's most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. And then moving forward, I would just like to point out, we're going to have a couple of proclamations that we're going to do here. And Commissioner Lewis is going to ask a person to come up momentarily. I just want to, in front of me is an award that the Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners received this past weekend from the Haverford Township Free Library. They had their annual gala, which was, this year's theme was the 007, Ian Fleming's 007 and what have you. But it was a very great fundraiser event that they had. And among this award here, which is Outstanding Community Advocate, which is what they graced us with as library advocates, also receiving awards that evening was Community Partner Award for the Haverford Township Adult School. And the Haverford Township Free Library Volunteer Awards of Honor went to Kurt Horvath and Joseph Rouch, Rouch, excuse me. So it was a great evening, if you remember it, next year around this time. Everybody is very welcome to it, but we're very honored and thankful to Haverford Township Free Library for this award. That's what is up here tonight. Moving forward, I know, Mr. Gentili, you're still getting that ready, but, Mr. Lewis, would you like to start your proclamation, or you want to?
As an Eagle Scout myself, I'm particularly proud tonight to recognize Fifth Ward resident for achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, and Ted Rogers. And he's joined here this evening by his parents, Paul and Francie Rogers, also Scoutmaster Joe Rosomera.
Ramosco.
Ramosco, I'm sorry. Joe Ramosco, Scoutmaster, and Jay Field, the Assistant Scoutmaster, but also Ted's Eagle Scout mentor. So if you could all come forward, I'd appreciate it.
Can't believe.
So on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to read into the record the following proclamation. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in acknowledging notable achievements of young adults in the community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud Edward Edmonds Ted Rogers of the Boy Scouts of America, Troop 19, for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout and completing his Eagle Scout project. Whereas for Ted's Eagle Scout project, he planned and implemented the redesign and renovation of the Brimmar Presbyterian Church Youth Ministries Programs, Loth and Crypt. These two areas have been unused for nearly a decade and are now being utilized by the youth ministry program every Sunday morning. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners hereby congratulates Ted Rogers for your many contributions to your community with your long hours and dedicated work. Our blessings go with you as you face new challenges, proclaimed this 14th day of November 2016 by the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, Ted, and I think this achievement shows signs of yet greater things to come. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Ted have anything to say? Ted, do you want to say anything up here at the podium?
So I was an Eagle Scout only because my father was an Eagle Scout, my brother was an Eagle Scout. So what influence did your father have on you becoming an Eagle Scout?
Well, my parents played a big part in helping me in scouting and just the support countlessly, excuse my voice crack, support countlessly to help me even get there. So I would love to thank my parents and thank the Haverford Township for letting me give this proclamation to me. So thank you very much, and thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Next up, Commissioner Oliva and Commissioner D'Amelio, along with you, or just by yourself? Okay. Is, has a proclamation for the Haverford Township Rotary Club. Haverford Township Rotary is here this evening?
Okay. Nobody's here for the Rotary Club, so we're going to just give it to the Rotary Club. I guess they couldn't make it this evening. So whereas Board of Commissioners, Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, takes great pleasure in recognizing dedicated groups and clubs in Haverford Township. And whereas a club on a mission in Haverford is Haverford Township Rotary Club, chartered in 1981, is to provide services to others, to promote high ethical standards, and to advance world understanding, goodwill, and peace through its fellowship of business, professional, and community leaders. And whereas the service above self includes fundraising, 100% of all the proceeds from the yearly sale of roses are donated to worthy projects such as sponsoring business breakfasts held at the library, organizing and planting shrubs and bulbs at Ardmore Avenue Junction, and volunteering to build and paint all the party elements for the senior high after-prom blast. To date, over 450,000 has been raised and given back to the community. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, wish continued success and blessing to the Haverford Township Rotary Club, proclaimed this 14th day of November 2016. Haverford Township Board of Commissioners, Chris Connell, President.
They were supposed to be with us tonight. We do have a proclamation also for Small Business Saturday, which is prior to this. I just wanted, thank you very much, let you know that these gentlemen are part of the Commissioners Committee for the Economic Development of Business in Haverford Township. So they wish to recognize the Rotary Club that has done so much for us. And Commissioner Wexler, also in that committee, has a proclamation to read for our business community.
Can I just interrupt for one second? The Rotary Club that they just mentioned, the one thing that they didn't mention, and it wasn't Mario's fault, it's not in here, but the Rotary Club has also raised a lot of money for the Friends of the Grange. Last year, they gave us a nice check from all the roses that they sell, and it's, they do things like that all over the township, giving things like that. Tara Gaines is the young lady that does that. Thank you.
It's my pleasure to read the proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. And whereas small businesses represent over 49% of all businesses with employees in the United States, 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue, and 80% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States. And whereas the Township of Haverford, Pennsylvania supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas the Board of Commissioners is proud to indicate that there are 2,351 licensed businesses in Haverford Township. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday following our National Thanksgiving Day holiday as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, also proclaim November 26, 2016 as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the entire year. Proclaimed this 14th day of November 2016, Township of Haverford Board of Commissioners, Chris Connell, Senior, President. So thank you for this proclamation for all small businesses, including one of mine. And I'd like to thank the Rotary Club, I had a daughter get engaged Thursday night, and I ran right up to Gans Plumbing and Heating and got my Rotary Club roses to present to her when they showed up at the house.
Ah, very nice. Very, very nice. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I mean, the committee is very important because what they're trying to do is to reach out to all the businesses of Haverford Township with a positive relationship between the business community and Haverford Township. Guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much for all of your work. Next up, we have a presentation. I'm going to ask PICO to come up, Mr. Ralph Brown and Mr. Tim Clark. The Township has been receiving multiple concerns about the different projects that PICO has been doing in the area and the adjust, to the adjustments of traffic patterns and what have you. And a couple of those things is that in some areas, there have been pockets of more frequent power outages than other areas. And then there was one question was, every once in a while, you see these individual wires that are hanging down. I think they're communication wires is what they are. But if you could enlighten us on, you know, how can we get them back up onto the poles? But here is Mr. Ralph Brown, and Mr. Tim Clark is behind him, from PICO. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Commissioner Connell and members of the board, good evening. My name is Ralph Brown. I'm the External Affairs Manager for PICO. And I was meeting with the Township Manager last week, and we briefed him on the updates of our gas infrastructure improvement project here in Haverford Township. He asked that I come to make a presentation to the board. PICO is in a multi-year gas upgrade, gas pipeline upgrade for our system. We've had some old pipe in the ground for a number of years, and we're in the process of changing that all out over a period of a number of years, like 15 years or so. And it's based on the age of the pipe in the ground, leak history, the type of pipe and so forth. This year alone in Haverford, we had 21 different projects. Right now, we have completed 15 of those projects, and we have six projects we're currently working. They started later in the year. And our plan is to be done all of our projects for 2016 by the second week of December. So we have been on various streets. I guess some of our most challenging jobs has been Eagle Road. We had over 2,500 feet of gas pipe to replace on Eagle Road, over 40-something services. And we understand that the main is in. We still have a few services that we need to complete, and we're looking to do some temporary restoration because we understand that the pavement is a little rumble, and we plan to address that, a little rumble.
I'm sorry. I chipped a couple of teeth driving down. That road is awful.
And we understand that, so our plan is starting the week of the 24, 21st, next week, we're going to do a temporary milling and pave of the area where we did the construction. So that'll give you a smooth wearing course, driving course, until the permanent restoration can be completed, probably sometime in the spring, depending upon how PennDOT allows us to do that. We still have some services to do there, but we can do the services after we do the permanent, the temporary restoration. This way at least, the residents will have a smooth driving path for the winter months and so forth. So we'll be addressing that starting on Monday. Another challenging job was the, we have the job at Haverford Road from Hazelwood to Overhill, that was 1,600 feet of main replacement and a number of services as well. We're finishing up that job actually tomorrow, doing the tie and putting the new gas on the new main tomorrow. And we plan to have that at least base by mid-September. We need at least 30-day settlement once we complete the project. So that's the plan now.
December, you mean?
Right.
December.
Excuse me, December. So that's the plan for that one. And I guess the other challenging one is Manoa from Arlington to Paddle Mill. We actually started doing the restoration on that job today. So we're planning to have that done by the end of the week for the most part, and that would have that milling overlay, so that'll be final restoration completed on those jobs. So that's pretty much on the gas side. I mean, it is a challenging job to replace the mains. We have to go into each individual property. We have to change out the services, then trying to coordinate with the homeowners. It does require them to be home so we can re-light their appliances and things like that. So it's not an easy task to do, but we're trying to upgrade the system and make it more safe and reliable for the residents. So from the gas part, that's all I have, unless I have any questions on that.
I do. Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you. Ralph, good to see you. Thank you for coming. We certainly appreciate it. And Westgate Hills, where you're going to be replacing gas lines, is an area that doesn't have gas. And I was told that PICO was going to run gas lines now that you replaced them up those streets, the main lines?
We'd have to check in that. But one of the things we are encouraging is if there's areas where it needs gas, we're sending out letters to the whole neighborhood when we start the projects. So we ask folks to give us a call so that they know their interest in gas. If we get enough folks interested, then we'll run the main down there.
Oh, they won't run it down unless people are interested?
They have to be interested. The other piece is if you're along a main where we're replacing and just don't have gas, then you can definitely connect to the new main if you don't already have gas. But that's for replacements mains that we're currently doing. But for new customers, we're willing to look at that.
So for clarifications, you're sending out letters to all the neighbors?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Do you know when they'll receive them, so I can let my constituency know?
If you want to send me the address, I mean, the street names?
Okay, I'll do that, Ralph. Yeah, I'll send you an email. I think I have your email.
Mr. McCloskey?
No, no, finish, just one more, other question. I'm sorry. You know, with winter weather coming and possible, possible ice on wires and whatnot, I'm wondering if, it seems, as we said earlier, that some of our streets seem to be going out all the time. So I'm wondering if a comprehensive study can be made before the weather gets really bad to look at maybe where you can cut trees back that are on lines, especially along Windsor Park Lane in the back there, because they always go out. Now, you know that, that's an area that just always goes out, and it seems that the trees back there are causing that problem. So anywhere, I guess, where there are trees, if you could do a comprehensive study in areas, that's not only the first ward, whoever else has a lot of power outages.
Yeah, we have.
You know, just if we could do a comprehensive study before things get worse, even if it goes into the spring, you know, this way you could start cutting some of these trees back and would prevent some of these outages in the same areas.
And we do have a preventive maintenance program, and we're actually gearing that up to do additional work as far as replacing cable in rear properties, doing a new technology we call Hendrix cable, which is a pretty robust cable where it has the ability to withstand some branches and things like that. So in Haverford Township and throughout the whole system, we're doing, actively doing a number of reliability improvement projects. If you have specific areas, again, get them to Larry, and we could take a look at them. I have to look at, you know, the circuit, and that way we can tell what's going on. Because just to say, you know, there's an outage all the time, I need to analyze it, and then we can determine what the problem is and try to fix it for you.
Okay. Mr. McCloskey?
The temporary paving that's going on Eagle Road, you said you're starting next Monday? How long does that take to get the temporary road down?
It'd take about a week. I've been doing it in the daytime at least, and it'd take about a week or so.
Yeah, the pavement was to be finished by the end of that week. Of course, we have Thanksgiving. They're targeting Wednesday to complete.
Wednesday.
Mr. Clark, if you could just come up a little closer to the mic, please.
Yeah, we're targeting to be completed by Thanksgiving, but it may roll into the Monday, Tuesday of the following week. Depends on the weather, of course, everything with paving is subject to weather.
Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, Ralph, hi. I want to talk about Eagle Road. Probably no PICO project. I mean, you and I have worked together, and you are very cooperative and open and responsive. Eagle Road has been an abomination, and I'm being kind. I am bombarded with people and businesses who have stopped into my office because it's in the middle of Eagle Road, emails, phone calls. And I attribute it to two things. One, the condition of the road and a, an abject lack of communication to the businesses and the residents by the contractors. We would come and go and find massive plates outside our driveways. At times, the projects, because of other things, extended into the morning hours. And I can tell you that if I didn't go and speak to the workers, none of the businesses knew what was going on. I came into my office one day and discovered that my office and nine other buildings didn't even have the mains reconnected, and we couldn't figure out why we were all freezing. And it took the person who owns my building to scream. PICO's communications have been much, much better over the years, and I'm glad to see that. But the contractors in this case, and I don't know how you control them, their lack of communication, their constant placing of, I mean, the plates outside my office literally made it impossible at times for us to work when tractor trailers are going over them and big cars. And I really implore you that in future projects, you learn from this, that where you're in the middle of a business district that gets a huge volume of traffic, that the levels of communication must improve. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Siegel. And we do recognize that. Tim and I have been talking considerably about how we can improve the communication with our contractors, because it's really up to them to tell you what's going on, when it's going on, and try to manage, you know, the traffic flow and that sort of thing. So we have to do a better job of making sure they hold up to that.
And the other thing is, I hear you're going to do this milling next week. I would hope you try to avoid the rush hours when the road is already horrendously backed up. I live 1.1 miles from this building, and I can tell you today, it took me 11 minutes just because of traffic at rush hour on Eagle Road. And if we add to that the volume of, the sort of the mess that paving is going to cause on half of that road and the traffic restrictions, I ask that you really try to cooperate with the residents to try to do this in a way that is as minimally disruptive as possible.
And we'll definitely take that into consideration.
There's no possibility route that could be done during the evening hours?
It's, with the temperatures getting cold at night, that's problematic for us. It'd be at least 30 degrees, and so we're pretty comfortable right now in the daytime. But we can definitely check on that if the weather gets warm.
If you, I understand, and if it has to be done during the day, if you can coordinate with the chief, because there's another project going on right now, that for improvements of the intersection of Lawrence and Eagle Road, so between those two, it could be pretty catastrophic.
Yes, we'll definitely communicate as to where we are with that.
The only thing I'd like to add to Commissioner, what Commissioner Siegel says was, the shape of that road while it's being worked on, I mean, the patches that were done to that road, take a drive down that road, and patches right into the left lane, so either, either you go through, you know, either you're bouncing all over the place at 20 miles an hour, and the traffic's not even moving, or, you know, because there's, there's traffic coming in and out and in the center lanes, I mean, it's horrible. It's not even close to being anything that, you should take a look at it, really, drive down.
I actually drove down, and I recognized exactly what you're saying. That's one of the reasons why we met with Larry last week, and took a drive and went back and talked to our folks, and that's why we're going to do the milling overlay, so you won't have to deal with that in another week or so, so we can get that paid. We still have to come back and do some work, but at least we can make the driving a little bit smoother for everybody.
Yeah. And it really does.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to, Ralph and I talk probably at least twice a month, I think, and I just want to thank you because you're always, always hear back from you the same day, and always responsive. You, you in particular, and know PICO is trying to be a good neighbor and do the best they can under difficult circumstances, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yeah, well, two things, now that Andy brought that up. I've had problems along the Old River right away, and with trees falling down in storms and all that. And when we got ahold of Ralph Brown immediately, he was on the job, got that cleared up, and the people got their power back on. And thank you, Ralph, and I agree with what Andy said. Ralph has always been right there. When we call him, he helps out a lot. The second thing I want to say is a little bit of a cute thing here, because the other day, I'm riding down, these guys yelled, "Hey, McGarrett, when's that Eagle Road going to get straightened out over there?" Well, the answer I have to them, and I hope they're watching the meeting, because I yelled to them, "Santa's coming." Well, ladies and gentlemen, if you're watching, here's Santa. You heard him one week, okay? We got it.
Oh, yeah. That was cute. Anybody else? As far as the eighth ward, I know you've been down there quite a bit, and my concerns down there really were residential power outages in different areas, so I'll get with, I'll get with the Township Manager with that, and then, super. Anybody else for the betterment? And gentlemen, do you have anything else? Oh, excuse me? You're moving forward.
I was just going to say, Mr. Brown, we haven't met, and that's indicative of how well PICO does in the sixth ward, or how little I pay attention, but I think it's the former and not the latter in this one instance, so thanks. Everybody says wonderful things about you, and don't take this wrong, but I hope I only have to deal with you socially, so thanks.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Clark, thank you very much for coming here this evening and addressing the board. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the face of PICO. There you go. Any concerns? Next up, Mr. Gentili is going to be doing some screwdriver issues over there. Mr. D'Amelio, you said you had some?
Oh, yes, thank you. May I just come up there for a second? Because I showed the book.
I know Larry still needs to tweak a little, a couple of things in there, if you would.
Ladies and gentlemen, I had the honor to be invited to the Association, the Regional Association of the Abruzzi Club in Delco. It was their 25th Annual Dinner Dance where they honored our chief.
Of police?
And they had Chief of Police, and they had a whole section in the book for him. This was their book.
Jeez, I hope we all get a copy of that, Steve.
No, I'm sorry, it's the only one we have. But it was quite an honor, and I attended with Mr. Gentili. Mr. Gentili was there.
Next up, Mr. Gentili is going to be doing some screwdriver issues over there. Mr. D'Amelio, you said you had some?
Oh, yes, thank you. May I just come up there for a second?
Uh, show the book. I know Larry still needs to tweak a little, couple things in there, if you would.
Ladies and gentlemen, I had the honor to be invited to the association, the regional association of the Abruzzi Club and Delco. It was their 25th annual dinner dance where they honored our chief.
Of police?
And they had, Chief of Police, and they had a whole section in the book for him. This was their book.
Geez, I hope we all get a copy of that, Steve.
No, I'm sorry, it's the only one we have. But it was quite an honor, and, and I attended with Mr. Gentili. Mr. Gentili was there, gave a great speech about the township and its police department and how far we've come and, and where we're going. So congratulations, Chief, for being honored.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Steve, hey, Steve, please, please tell us you didn't dance.
Not.
Oh, good, okay.
What organization was that, Abruzzi?
I have no idea what they're doing.
The Commissioners were there.
The Italians Club.
Abruzzi.
Because I know them.
I think we are, well, next up. And next up, we, we do have the Haverford Township Adult School Representative, Gail Farley Semrad.
Semrad.
Semrad. Thank you very much for coming this evening, and please take the floor.
First, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for inviting us to present a little bit about the Haverford Township Adult School. Today, I have with me our Vice President, Jim Seigray Daly, and my name is Gail Farley Semrad, and I'm the President of the Board. So who are we? Well, we've actually been around for 60 years. Can you imagine that? 60 years?
I can.
All right. One of the things that's great is it actually was something that was developed through the Commissioners of the Township, and it incorporated it into a nonprofit volunteer board in 1959, and that's where we have come from 1959 to today. And as you can see from our brochure there, and many of you have probably gotten them into your mailboxes, maybe one or two, and, you know, we have so much to offer. But what is our mission statement? Well, our mission statement has always been to provide quality education, to develop our community and develop our recreation, and, but primarily to make it convenient and affordable. For anyone who has ever looked at maybe a, a mainline school night brochure, you may notice that their prices are a little higher than us. So we really do work hard at keeping it affordable. The other thing, too, is HTAS, we have been around for 60 years, but we have seen so many other adult schools just disappearing off the face of the earth. You know, we are, we have been able to sustain this and we're very proud of that. And a lot of it, I think, has to do with our dedication of our volunteer board and all the great instructors and participants that's associated with Haverford. One of the great things that we're very proud of is working with our community partners. As you mentioned, we were actually nominated as a community partner by the library, and we, we also received an award this Saturday, and we thank them for that. We're very proud of that. And as you can see, we work with community businesses that actually are township-based. Now, many of these community businesses are actually on our sponsor sheet, or our sponsor on our website, and you can see them listed as gold and bronze and, and silver and things like that. But the one thing that I want to point out to, that we're extremely grateful to, is the Haverford Township Civic Council. We applied for a $2,500 grant and received it last year, which allowed us to do increased marketing and to do more marketing awareness around the community and on the outskirts of the community, which was extremely beneficial. So as you know, we offer all kinds of different classes. You know, if you've ever looked through our brochure, everything from, you know, some community enrichment classes that actually cost zero, that they are free, all the way up to different classes, whether it's in fitness or whether it's in cooking. Some are actually outside the township where you can eat your way through the Italian market, so that's a fun one that a lot of people like. But this all doesn't go without having a budget. Now, our budget is not a huge budget, it's only about $125,000. And our budget is, our income is from tuition, and our income is from donations and grants. Our expenses are listed on the board, which basically is everything, you know, to run a business, you have those type of things. A lot of times people are not aware of, and I'm hoping, because this is broadcast and we have members in the audience, that the Haverford Township Adult School does not receive funds either from the township or from the school district. So we are basically, you know, self-managed. If our tuition monies go down, people don't take classes, then basically it makes it really hard for us to eat, to balance out our budget. So we did a big push with donations. We're actually looking at different ways that we can get different grants. I've actually been in touch with Mr. Vitale. So it's one of those things that we have some challenges that we have. And the reason I wanted to share the challenges with you is, remember how I mentioned that so many of the other adult schools have kind of gone by the wayside like the Jodel? The challenges that we have is that we have a lot of competition and we have had a lot of changes over the last 60 years. You're talking three generations. Just think of the technology changes alone over the last three years. So no longer do you have to actually go to a class, you can Google it, right? You can Google it and get the instructions and knit your sweater. You don't necessarily have to do that. But it's actually a great community-building experience to attend classes, you know, with others. We're hoping to increase our community awareness by participating. We always participate in Township Day. This year, we were at Music Fest. We're hooking up with the Rotary Club that you guys were just mentioning, what a great partner, and trying to expand our mailings. What we mean by that is that you do not have to be a township resident to actually attend our classes. And because our name is Haverford Township Adult School, a lot of times people think, "Oh, I have to live in Haverford Township," and that's not the case. We basically, any, you can live anywhere. So what we're trying to do is expand the mailings, and this was something that we used the grant money for, to actually go, you know, a few streets outside of the township and kind of the border communities around our township, to try to, you know, increase awareness and actually bring in, you know, new students. So innovation is a key for us, because we are a nonprofit and we are a volunteer board, so we're always looking at new ways to do things. What we have noticed is that, you know, it's important to keep things fresh, so we have a lot of, you know, you'll even see it in the brochures, where it'll say, "This is new, and this is new, and this is new." Some of the interesting instructors that we've talked to recently is like beekeeping and some other, what we call exponential type of classes, which means people want to come to class and take something home. They want to do something like dish and dabble and then take it home. And those are very popular classes, so we're looking at ways to increase that. We also want to target our millennial learners. You know, we're getting a lot of young families coming into the township, and we want to make sure that we're looking at the demographics and we're addressing the needs of the community that we live in. And so we're looking at different things to incorporate into that. One of our most popular classes is the voiceover class, like for commercials and things like that. And I think Jim can attest to this, that it is full of young people. So, you know, that's really nice to see that. We all increased our fundraising efforts, you know, we're going after new partners, we're always seeking new sponsorship, and we're also investigate, investigating some grant options. And we're talking to foundations, you know, we're talking to, to see if there's some type of adult literacy or lifelong learning, you know, type of niche that we can kind of fall into. So we're not sitting on our laurels, you know, when it comes to the board members. We're trying really hard. So what can the Commissioners do to help HTAS? It doesn't even have anything to do with money. It has mostly to do with recognition and promoting us. So what we're hoping is, and many of you guys do a great job, trust me, I've seen it. I know Rita sends, sends announcements out to you all to promote either on your email blast or maybe your Commissioners newsletter, but, you know, I just want you to know what we're about, to put a face to the name so that when you're talking to other people, you can promote us in, in many other levels. One of the things we talked about, you were talking about small business Saturday, but there's also coming, coming up is giving Tuesday. So giving Tuesday is something where you think about who do you want to have your charitable contributions. And we're hoping that if you're giving a list of Haverford Township businesses and organizations that are nonprofits, that you include the Haverford Township Adult School in your listing. That would be a great help to us. Also, if you know of anyone who may be a great instructor or maybe something you would like to teach, feel free to contact us and we're happy to bring them on board. We're always looking for someone new. And I know that you guys have many Commissioner boards, and I'm sure you get a lot of resumes, and I'm sure you get more resumes than you can even deal with. You know, there's not enough positions on that board for the amount of resumes you got. One of the things we're looking for is to increase our board members and to, to bring in more people. So if you're going through those resumes and you have someone who's really interested in volunteering, interested in adult education, interested in giving back to the community, please feel free to forward that information on to me, and I will be happy to contact them and possibly add them on to the board if they're interested. And just, if, if there are any discretionary funds, you know, I know a lot of it is federal more than anything else, and I know a lot of that has dried up. But if there are any and you're, you're looking at organizations within the township, just please remember HTAS. So I just want to thank you guys for giving me these, this time to talk to you about our history, our challenges, and our opportunities, and we are excited to continue to serve Haverford Township. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions, or? No, I would also like to point out that Gail is also, your husband
Yes.
has been a veteran officer at Haverford Township, 22 going on 23 years.
Yes, yes.
And thank you very much for your family's commitment to our community there as well. And not to mention, your husband has a partner.
Oh, we love his partner.
His four-legged partner, yes, absolutely.
Pico.
So thank, thank you very much for coming this evening. And please, anybody has any questions, please reach out to the Haverford Township Adult School that has huge amount of programs. And anybody that knows volunteers, please contact the Haverford Township Adult School as soon as you can. And they're still in the Brookline, the office is still at the Brookline, Old Brookline Elementary School, 1105 Arlington Road. Dot org. Thank you very, very much. www.haverfordadultschool.org for the people at home. Thank you very much again.
Yes.
Okay, we will move into our administrative part of the meeting, the session. We have a criminal update report from the Chief of Police, Chief Iola.
Thank you, Commissioner. Report for October 2016. The Police Department issued 211 parking tickets, 489 traffic citations, and 253 written warnings. We had a sex offense on 10/27 that was reported to Lower Marion PD. It turns out it happened in Haverford Township. Reported as a rape. The suspect has been identified. Investigation is ongoing. I believe that arrest has already been made on that. We had burglaries, four burglaries on 10/20 and 2600 Block of Darby Road, on 10/16, and then two firearms were taken, and three juveniles and one adult were identified and charged. The two firearms were recovered. Now, our detectives worked hard on that on the weekend because we knew those weapons were out in the street in inexperienced hands. We didn't want any problems. So detectives worked very hard on that and brought that to closure very quickly. On 10/23, 16 Colfax Road and Tyson Road, two juveniles were identified and charged on that job. On 10/28, 200 Block Glenda Road, a neighborhood dispute, and one neighbor was charged with burglary. We had attempted burglary, three attempted burglaries. On 10/8 to 100 Block of East Marthart, a screen was pushed in, Bilko doors were pushed, were, were opened. Up on the second house in the 2500 Block of Hearst Terrace, the front window was pushed in. Once again, thefts from vehicles. We had nine vehicles entered on 10/5, 10/7, 10/8, 10/18, 10/18, 10/21, 10/20, and 10/31. Dill Road, Vermont Road, Farwood Road, two on Clearfield, one at the Waterford, Waterford Apartment Lots, a large road, the YMCA lot of Forest Century into a car in Haverford College of Forest Century. Vehicle thefts. We have four vehicle thefts. 133 Darby Road, a Chevrolet was taken. 10/5 and 10/18. 10/5 on Normandy Drive, a 2009 Acura, a valet key was in the vehicle. 2400 Block of Hearst Terrace, a Ford F-250 was taken, unlocked, key was in the truck. On 10/18, Huntington Lane, a 2014 Honda, a lock key in the vehicle was recovered, Upper Providence Township. One person was arrested by Upper Providence PD. There was, we feel it's a connection between the other Hearst Terrace job. Three people bailed out of the car, and obviously the one we have in custody isn't, has too much to say. We had six K-9 usages, a DOI arrest with the vehicle sniff, two vehicle stops. A O J from Marple Township, East Town for a, a township for a police department tracking. A O J in the Armory Section of Haverford Township with DEA for a search warrant. Arrested residence was searched. That's my report. Any questions for anybody?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Next up is the auditor's report.
Good evening. I reviewed the disbursements for the period beginning October 18, 2016, and ending November 14, 2016. I raised certain questions of our Township Finance Director. All the questions were answered to my satisfaction. Therefore, in my opinion, there were no irregularities for the period in question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Number six, item number six on the agenda is Citizens Forum. This is 20 minutes of registered speakers and then 20 minutes of agenda items. The, tonight we have two, I'm sorry? Am I too loud?
Yeah.
Okay. I have two people who are registered to speak this evening, and the first individual is Mr. Brooks from the Grange.
Good evening. Chad Brooks, Warner Campbell Avenue. I'm here as your representative to the Grange Estate. Firstly, I would like to report on two successful fall events. We had the Grange on tap, and then the Home Brewers Challenge was, we partnered with the Penn Fields Civic Association. Both events were very successful, very pleased. It was kind of an experiment to start. It was the first time we used the amphitheater, and it was a natural for the music events there. It was a very pleasant evening, both evenings, and the music of both evenings was very good, and it shows what can be done. As we move forward with the amphitheater and make it handicapped accessible, I think it's going to be a great asset. It can be a fundraiser for the Grange, and there can be a lot of events there in the spring and the summer. It's really quite nice to go down, and it's a natural environment for music because it, it's kind of a ball and works perfect for a musical event. So they were successful then. On October 29, we had our open house. Despite some challenging weather, there were a lot of straw men stuffed and pumpkins painted. The kids had a great time, and it's a great event for families. Highly recommend it. If you can recommend your constituents next year, it's a great event. But I'm here mostly tonight because we're starting the Christmas season. Tonight, it's 40 days to Christmas. And we're already started, we're decorating like crazy. We're going to open up the weekend after Thanksgiving. So that, that Saturday, we'll be open for tours, and the tours will continue through the second week in January. The exception is Christmas this year is on a Sunday, so the 24th and 25th are not available, so we're going to be open on the 23rd and the 26th for tours. So December 23rd and December 26th. And I want to emphasize, I should have said this last time that I was here, I know that something like the Grange, it seems like it's tucked away in the eighth ward and it's out of people's minds, but it is Haverford Township's historic site. It's for the whole township. It's for the fifth ward and the third ward and the ninth ward. Everybody should treasure it. Everybody should come and see it at least once, but really at Christmas time, come at Christmas time. The, December 8 is the Grange Holiday Party. Really fun way to start your holiday, really fun way to, to enjoy it. There was mention of the, the Rotary tonight. The season ends with the Rotary Party, and Rotary puts on a great party. So if you want to tie it up at the end of, the middle of January, come to the Rotary Party and, and enjoy the Rotary Party at the end. This year, they're going to try again, we're trying to expand the things we do. On Saturday, December 10, from 10 to noon, they will be taking pictures. They will have a very nice camera, and they will take pictures at the Grange train layout. The layout last year was great. This year is going to be even more spectacular. You've got to come and see the trains. It is fantastic how hard they're working, and it's going to be really something to see. Bring your kids, there's going to be a free photo. They'll do the camera, the lighting, and the trains. You bring the kids, give them an email address, and they'll email you the, the photograph. Then on Monday, December 12, from 6:30 to 8:30, they're encouraging photographers to come, and there's a lot of people out there that love trains and love toy trains. They can come and they can photograph the trains from 6:30 to 8:30. By the way, both these By the way, both these events are free, no charge to the public. You just show up and enjoy it. And because the train people are going to be there December 12th, I will be there, the house will be open and you can come and tour the house and see the houses. Every room has got a tree, every room is decorated. It's really a spectacular time to come to the Grange. It's a wonderful building, it's a wonderful treasure that you have there. One other thing, we have a sister organization, the Haverford Township Historical Society, and they do a holiday house tour. If you've ever done it, that is really fun to get to see what people have done to their houses, the historical houses, how they changed them, how they've artificed them, what they've kept. I highly recommend it. It's $20 for members, $25 for non-members, but you could join the Historical Society right then and then get your $20 tour. But it is, that is another fun thing during the holidays. That is on Sunday, the 11th of December from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The homeowners are very gracious and very opening. Do you have a question?
Yeah, Chad, I mean, I've been there and you know I've been there to the Grange during the holidays. It's spectacular. Even your setup was unbelievable last year.
Amazing.
Totally amazing. I recommend, I highly recommend it. When do they, when do they start again? When do these tours start again, did you say?
November 26.
November 26.
And the trains will be up then too?
November 26 and the trains will be up open too.
A train.
The trains are free.
That layout was amazing, amazing.
November 26, it's 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And it runs through to January 9th, I believe.
And what he's saying is all through December, the trains on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, are running from 1 o'clock to what?
4 o'clock.
1 to 4. And anybody that has kids, bring them down. Not only will you love it this year, you'll bring it back every year because they'll want to come back.
And I'll just give you one more thing that comes up. This is a great running town and we have three spectacular community events coming up. The Turkey Trot at Annunciation, really fun community event. The Choi Run, which is at the Haverford Reserve, it's a trail run. If you've ever went to experience the reserve and you like running trails. And then Kevin Noem puts on the Reindeer Run. That is December 11th. It attracts 600 runners, it will sell out. So if you're interested in doing that, you should be registering now. That's a spectacular event down the busway and through Merwood. Really, really great event and it's for the American Cancer Society and they have raised a ton of money over the years for the American Cancer Society. Any questions? Did I cover everything sufficiently?
Chad tells you about the runs because he usually wins them, I'll tell you that. He's pretty good, I'll tell you.
Mr. Brooks, if they want to reach out, it's www.TheGrangeEstate.org.
Dot org. GrangeEstate.org.
Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. Next one registered speakers is Dr. Levin.
Dr. Seagull.
All right, thank you very much, Doctor. The next section of our Citizens Forum will be 20 minutes on agenda items and I'm going to start with this side of the room on the first row. Would anybody like to come up and speak about agenda, something on the agenda? Second row? Third row? On this side of the room, the first row? Second row? The third row? And please give your name and your address. I know I speak too loud, I guess at times, but if everyone, whoever comes up to the podium, please speak into the mic with your name and address, please.
My name is Bruce Woodruff, 408 Lanark. And I have a question about agenda number 12. If Mario, you can explain this to me, please? Regarding parking on Lanark.
Okay.
Item 12.
Is that, is that it? Is that your only question?
Well, yeah, I have a question, but I also want to make a comment. Based on what's written here, this is not what was discussed the last meeting. And we, the last meeting you had said that you were going to propose restrictions on commercial vehicles. That's not what I'm reading, so I'd like an explanation or a clarification of what this is.
Sure, I'll be guided to clarify that for you.
Thank you.
This here is not what you were, what we were talking about.
Okay, you want to go through the, or you want to do it now? I'll give you that option.
Okay, okay, we can finish.
Okay. Anybody else in that row? And then the last row. Okay, that concludes the...
Mr. President, I did intend, as we discussed in executive session, to add something to the agenda. I know there are people here.
Yes, sir. What I'm going to do, first, you want to answer, they'll answer and then we'll go right over to you and we can dedicate more time to that.
Okay, these are two different things. The one, go ahead.
Well, all I was going to do was invite public comment, not address the issue yet, but just, I do know there are folks here from there, so if we were going to add them to the Citizens Forum or whether you want to wait till Mario speaks first.
Okay, then what I will do then is at this time then, adding to the agenda, the board will speak about a property on the 2500 Block of Chestnut Avenue, which is an agenda item, which will become an agenda item. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak about the properties on the 2500 Block of Chestnut Avenue?
Take it or 2508.
There's somebody over here.
And when you come up, please give your name and your address.
Ben Bedard, 2510 Chestnut Avenue, the attached twin to the property in question. I have been a resident and a homeowner for more than nine years in this township and I stand before you to urge this commission to take action and approve any monies necessary for the safety and betterment of my street and Haverford Township in general. I want everyone to keep in mind the number 34, 34 months. In 34 months, my daughter has had three birthdays. In 34 months, the Cubs were still 105 years into their World Series drought. And 34 months ago, I informed this township about the problems with my house being attached to 2508. I'd like to read you an email that I sent to the township. It is an excerpt of a complete email. Including the state of the roof, the windows, the gutters, the soffits and the nuisance this house is, it has become a drain on my home and the neighborhood. I have lost faith that Haverford Township has the ability to compel compliance of its codes and laws. How many more of these letters do I have to write? How many more complaint forms do I have to fill out? How many more code enforcement officers do I have to allow access to my property? If you think I'm overstating the issues or complaints, if you have any questions about the validity of my frustrations, I invite you to park your car in front of this house, step outside, take a walk past the driveway, examine the house from all angles. Now ask yourself, how would you feel living next to, next to or attached to a dump like this for more than two years in its current state? Imagine, imagine taking your house off the market after more than 100 walkthroughs and not one offer. No one wants to buy a house in Haverford Township that's next to a house that looks like it's about to fall down. Repeatedly contacting the township for remedy and being met with what you perceive as inaction and non-priority. Think about all that and after, you might get an idea of how frustrated and upset I've become. Now take out your pens and write down November 13, 2013. That's when I sent this email to Larry Holmes, Steve Adrian and I believe Joe Celia. I hope you will do something to restore a small fraction of my faith in government's ability to get things done. Thank you.
Sarah Bedard, 2510 Chestnut Avenue. That's my husband and he can speak to more of the facts of this, but I'd like to appeal the argument on an emotional level. Seeing my daughter grow up, sorry, in a house that is attached to such a just deplorable, disgusting abomination of a residence and having the township do nothing at all to remedy the situation is beyond frustrating, it's embarrassing, it's embarrassing to our friends, it's an embarrassment on the community as a whole, it's bringing down property values. I mean, everybody is just disgusted. Our houses are attached. You can walk through the ceiling, you can look through our ceiling on our third floor and see into the ceiling of 2508. I mean, it's completely unsafe, it's a violation of codes, it's just unacceptable. I've come home and found dead rats on my porch. I've had to deal with exterminators, with vermin, with roofs falling down, with horrendous smells coming from next door, from potential burglaries, from just boarded up, just broken windows, roofs that you can just reach your hand in and pull out a handful of just rotted wood. I mean, I would like any of you to imagine living next door to that, attached to that, having your children grow up attached to that and then contacting the township, contacting you all repeatedly and having nothing be done. Just put yourself in our shoes, do whatever humanly possible it takes. Thanks.
Okay, and answering those questions, Mr. Aliva.
Okay, so number, I'm sorry. Item 12 on the agenda is about parking at the corner, parking off the corners. That is not anything to do with the truck ordinance, which I spoke to you about last month. What happened with that is we sent it over to the police department, they did some research and it seems like not all your neighbors are in favor of that. So I have to go down and put together a petition and get signatures to make sure that everybody over there wants truck parking, truck parking restricted on your street because there have been calls to me and to the police department as well as they've reached out to some residents over there and they're not...
That's fine.
To other residents.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not every resident who wants truck park, that restricted on the street. So I need to do a petition over there and get over there. So that is going to be on, you know, on another agenda if, if that is in fact what the community wants. That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Aliva.
What's that? 70%.
Yeah, exactly.
If you would please, go ahead and address...
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. As, as, as the issues involving 2508 Chestnut Avenue involve real estate and legal actions by the township, it was appropriate for a conversation at the executive session level. That conversation was had. I will be adding to the agenda tonight, an item, two resolutions, a resolution authorizing our township solicitor to take all the legal steps necessary up to and including, if necessary, eminent domain over the 2508 Chestnut Avenue and also to authorize our township manager to, up to $30,000 to expend on repairs at 2508. That is something we will add to the agenda tonight and the township solicitor has advised us on that issue legally as to the township's ability to recover the money that it spends on that. And I could say nothing more compelling than the residents of 2510 have already said in support of this action. So obviously it has my support and I have faith in the rest of the board that this is a circumstance where the, the good of the township, the good of the neighboring house, which is really in jeopardy as a result of the, of the condition of this house, as well as the values of the property and the neighbors around it. And the township, this has been a very, very involved legal situation dealing with estates and banks that have competing interests. And again, I can't describe how horrible the situation is any more effectively than, than the neighbors have and is something I'd like to, when we get to it, add it to the agenda and put it before you for your consideration.
Okay, and that is, that will be under new business.
Great.
Which is item number 16. Now, we discussed earlier the possibility of moving new business from number 16 to number, I'm going to recommend number...
President, I'll make a motion that we amend our agenda.
Can I say one thing? For housekeeping purposes, can we get through item number six and item number seven, which is the approval of the last month's minutes and as well as the expenditures, the warrants?
Sure.
So could we move that then, if you would, Mr. Wexler, put into your request item number eight?
I'd make a motion that we amend the agenda to move new business to item number eight.
Seconded by Mr. McGarry.
Number nine.
Number nine. After the approval of warrants.
After the...
Second.
I'm sorry.
Jimmy. Commissioner McGarry.
Can we just show, a show of hands, Mr. Solicitor, that's all we need to do?
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor? And the ayes have it. So for the sake of business then, if we would please move on to item number seven, which is the approval of the minutes, Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 17, 2016.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number eight, approval of the warrants, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 11 of 2016 totaling $3,722,704.34. The general, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for October 20, 2016, the amount of $665,164.12. The general sewer fund payroll for November 3, 2016, in the amount of $615,620.38. General fund dispersments, number 11 of 2016, in the amount of $1,313,171.31. Sewer fund dispersments, number 11 of 2016, in the amount of $47,792.4. Community development block grant fund dispersments, number 11 of 2016, in the amount of $83,602.68. Home grant fund, number 11 of 2016, in the amount of $16,696.50. Capital project fund, number 11 of 2016, in the amount of $978,662.35. And a credit card statement ending October 27, 2016, in the amount of $1,994.96.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarry.
Mr. President, our township auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that he has raised, he has brought to the attention of our township finance director who has answered his questions to his satisfaction. He has recommended we approve these warrants and I do the same.
Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarry?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes. Item number nine will be new business and Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. I have two items for our board to consider. I put them in order. The first item is for this board, subject to the conversations that we held in executive session with our township solicitor, I would ask this board to authorize the township solicitor to take all the legal steps necessary to secure the township's, the money the township has already expended and the money the township will expend to make repairs at 2508 Chestnut Avenue. That authorization includes but is not limited to negotiating with the redevelopment authority, executing a judgment and enforcing the same against the ultimate owners of 2508 Chestnut Avenue or if necessary exercising eminent domain.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Any presentation other than, I'm sorry, we did discuss this in executive session. discuss this in executive session, and I do believe that all our commissioners are with the understanding of that discussion?
Correct.
And if I may please have the, take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, when you have the opportunity.
Oh, Mr. President, if I may now present a second resolution for the board to consider. Up until now, the township has expended money on certain repairs to 2508. The township has also hired people to clean out the house of the items that were left behind in it. There's been extermination, there's been work in the property. It is not enough to make this house safe for the neighborhood, but it does now exceed the amount of discretion that Mr. Gentili, as our township manager, is able to exercise without board approval. I ask the board to authorize our township manager and the various people he employs in codes and in public works to expend, not to exceed $30,000 for the repairs necessary at 2508.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. D'Amelio.
No.
Mr. Aliva, there has been prior discussion in executive session on this and with counsel. Therefore, I will ask there to be, take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, without any further, Mr. Holmes, if you wished to take whatever time it is at your convenience to discuss that with the other people involved, other parties involved.
Absolutely, happy to, thanks.
Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 10.
Mr. President, just a point of order, are we going to take other new business now or defer that?
Well, as in new business, let's, I'm sorry, my apologies, yes, let's continue with new business, stay in that category right there. Anybody else new business? Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, I just have, it's a housekeeping matter, but it'll be on the agenda for next month, so I just wanted to just address it with the board. We have to do a resolution every year scheduling our meetings for the subsequent year, and they would be, as in the past, of course, on the work sessions on the first Monday and a regular meeting on the second, but there would be two, there would be a couple of changes. Obviously, in January, we have our reorganization meeting the first Monday, and the, in April, we would move the work session, we would not have a work session and would have the regular meeting on April 3 because of a religious holiday, and I would assume we would not have a work session on July 3, nor do we ever have one on the day before Election Day. Similarly, so those would be those dates. And then the only question would be whether we would still have a work session the day after Labor Day, since Labor Day is the first Monday in September.
Okay, so, and that will be on next month's agenda?
Right, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, that that's the proposed dates, but the main change is April because we have, the April 10 would be on a religious holiday.
So we're having it April 3?
Correct, assuming the board approves it.
Okay, so noted. Thank you very much, Mr. Siegel. And also, this board needs to make a decision on when we need to meet for interviews, one or two nights. So as soon as we could actually come to that agreement, and then we will contact you, Mr. Gentili, for that. Okay.
Are you going to circulate some dates, Chris?
Yes.
Okay.
We will, okay. And the sooner the better, right? Anybody else have anything under new business? There being none, then we will move forward on the agenda, which is item number 10, former item number 9, which is ordinance number P12, 2016. I believe that's Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P12, 2016, further amending and supplementing chapter 182 zoning by revising the provisions of sections 106 and 727 regarding fences and retaining walls.
Second?
Seconded by, excuse me, seconded by Mr. Holmes. Discussion?
Yeah, and again, Chris, this will be if there's the clarity from the codes department, if the fence is within its legal, you know what I mean, they put the fence up and maybe they may not be on their property, they have to get it surveyed?
Yeah, anybody that puts, has the fence up has to have a survey done so that they're not on the other person's property. Mrs. Widow?
If the property, if the property line is properly delineated and there isn't a question of the property, they can put it up with a plan drawn to an accurate scale, get zoning approval. If there is a question about the location of the property line, if it's unclear, then a survey may be required at the request of the zoning officer.
Okay, and Mr. McGary, I think you also had a question about the solid fence versus the concern about that.
That was answered last, you know, right? Instead of the, you went to five and one, and I wanted it to be four and two, right, Lori?
It's five and one, as it's proposed right now.
Right, unless it's 50 foot?
She said that with a smile.
It's more than, if it's more than 50 foot in width, then a six-foot solid fence is permitted. If the lot has more than a 50-foot width at the street line, a six-foot solid fence is permitted on the side and rear property lines.
Thank you. Any additional?
Mr. President?
Siegel?
Yeah, this is more a point of reference. I've had numerous comments about the fence ordinance, but they deal with a separate issue of invisible fencing, which I'm not going to amend this ordinance, but I have raised this with Ms. Hanlon Widow, that I've had numerous complaints about issues of people with invisible fence with no markings, and you're walking down a sidewalk, and dogs come at you and you don't realize that it's a problem. I'd like to at least bring up for discussion next month, because not going to change this, that we require people with invisible fencing to at least post that there is invisible fencing and have a setback of like three feet from the sidewalk, so that if a dog is charging, it will stop and not intimidate or scare as, I mean, I've had many complaints, people walking down a sidewalk, but that's a separate item. But I just want to bring it up at least so the board knows, because I don't know if it'll fall under zoning or it'll fall under, where it'll fall, animal control, okay?
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
No.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
And no. Number 11, ordinance number 22, 2012, Mr. Wexler?
Motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P22, 2016, amending chapter 30, pensions and employment benefits as it pertains to employer and employee contributions to the civilian defined contribution plan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aliva. Discussion? This is the second reading. Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 12, ordinance P23, 2016, traffic, second reading. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance number P23-2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Stop intersection established on Blakely Road at the intersection of Tunbridge Road. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times. Amended to read Farwood Road East Side, 90 feet south of East Manoa Road. Establish Brookview Lane West Side, 65 feet north of Strathmore Road by 558 Strathmore Road.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Discussion? This is a second reading as well. Please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 13, ordinance P26, 2016. This is the first reading, Mr. Aliva.
Yes, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P26, 2016, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, the east side of Lanark Avenue from Mifflin Avenue to a point 30 feet north, the east side of Lanark Avenue from West Park to a point 30 feet north.
Second?
I'm sorry, and it was seconded by Mr. McCluskey?
This is people parking on top of the stop signs.
Got you.
So trying to stop that.
Discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 14 is a resolution, Mr. Aliva, is that you?
Yes, motion to adopt resolution number 20, 29, 2016, approving the preliminary land development for Carol's Corporation.
Doing business.
Yeah, DBA Burger King Corporation, for the property located at 233 West Chester Pike, Haverford, PA, Delaware County, and known as DC Foley number 22020086300, has been submitted to demolish the existing 3,079 square foot restaurant and construct a new 2,703 square foot restaurant with a 39 parking, 39 space parking lot and an underground stormwater management facility. The subject property is Zone C1 Limited Commercial District, and is located in the second ward. The aforementioned plans were prepared by GBC Design Incorporated, Akron, Ohio, 44320, dated August 23, 2016, and has been revised on October 2, 2016, subject to the recommendations of the planning commission.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Discussion?
Yeah, Mario, I'm just curious now, they're making the building smaller, and the 39, how many cars does it presently park down at Burger King?
Hi, Cal. Okay, I believe we are at 47 spaces, but I'll check more.
Okay, I guess, but the question I'm asking is, with the building being smaller, and there's 51 there now, wouldn't it be more than less?
We're adding more green space.
Green space?
We're adding more green space, less impervious, so.
Oh, the green space.
Yes, the green space, we're adding green space, Jim.
Oh, I didn't figure on the green space.
We're encouraging people to walk to Burger King.
Right. Come on, it's a whopper of a deal.
At least carpool there, is that what we want?
Less traffic then, or what?
What's that? They're expect, they're, well, it's a small, it's a smaller, smaller dining area, because their business is more drive-through than it is people, people there, so they're making it, you know...
Double line, stuff like that. So there's a traffic study that says they've got more drive-through than eat-in, I guess, is what you're saying?
We didn't require a traffic study since the use was staying the same, this building itself is getting smaller. Basically, not much is changing, other than the building is being updated, decreasing in size, adding more green space.
But they're not increasing the amount of drive-through traffic. If that's staying the same, what is there, making the, they're using, utilizing this space better because they aren't using a lot of space inside of the building for indoor dining?
Yeah, I guess, but my question is, are there less trips, less parking required?
Yes.
Based upon just, just on square foot is what you're saying.
Is it me? 39 spaces is a lot for a fast food restaurant, isn't it?
Yeah, mhm.
Anyway, they didn't need 50, did they?
No, they did not.
But in order for that to go down, it's less tables.
Due to higher zoning order back in, there was one in 68 and another one in the 80s, I believe, there was some crazy conditions, so they did amend those.
Cars were eight feet wider in 1968, I mean.
They, I think, I'm not, I can't say what the intention was in 1968, but I think that they were, the community was upset about the development for Burger King, whereas now, we're pretty used to it. I think we, you know, we like it there, we wanted to leave it, and we don't, we decide, the zoning hearing board decided not to impose that parking restriction on it any longer.
It has my vote.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Kirk.
Welcome.
Anything further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 15 deals with finances, the YMCA. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move we release the improvement security bond related to the development of 891 North Eagle Road, Haverford, also known as the YMCA.
Second?
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Discussion?
Yep.
What do you mean by release the security bond? Tell me that.
This bond was put in place years and years and years ago before the, before the construction started and the demolition and all that, and it was, it was there, it was in the name of the township, in the event something went wrong with the construction. And that's now all complete, and it's time to release that bond.
And how much is it?
Lori?
Oh, geez.
Approximately 10 million, 20 million?
Actually, Michael Trop is here from the YMCA, he might have a better idea, but the amount that was secured was only the costs associated with the construction of the quasi-public improvements, the parking, parking lot lights, stormwater management improvements, things of that nature.
Oh, not the building itself?
Not the building itself. The building itself is a private improvement, we only lease the land to the YMCA. The $28 million that was invested was invested by the YMCA, not Haverford Township.
Nonetheless, whether it was $50 million or $5, the fact is, we're well past the point, the work is over, we're past the statute of limitations, there aren't any issues with regard to the public improvements in that area, and in the normal course of any construction project that we would do, where we would require a performance bond, by now is when we would release it, is that correct?
Correct. Once the 100% of the required improvements is completed, the bond can be released. There's a maintenance obligation for 18 months for those improvements that will become the responsibility of the township. And so we've, we have a situation where we're releasing the money down to that balance, that maintenance...
To the maintenance.
Amount, and the agreement that, we have a maintenance agreement that has been vetted through the solicitor's office, actually, I think the solicitor's office wrote this agreement. It was approved by the YMCA, and it just covers streetlights, there's just a couple of things. The parking lot and some of the other improvements that are out there are all by lease, completely, fully, the obligation maintenance by the tenant and not by the landlord.
So the improvement of the streets, that was, was that part of this bond?
The work that's going on now?
Yeah.
No, that's covered by a separate escrow with Penn Dutt.
Okay, so not covered, subject to this bond?
No, and then the work that was on the parking lot, the extra parking lot, where the two houses used to be at the corner, that's something completely different. This is on the main campus.
So your office clears this?
Does Township Engineer's Office clears it as well as our office?
Dave?
What we do is, our job is inspect the site to make sure the work was done in accordance with the approved land development plans. As Lori mentioned, this escrow has nothing to do with the building, it's the improvements, and in fact, it's like every development in the township, it's right part of the requirements to the MPC. And just as a little more adification, it's $60,000 approximately that goes into the 18-month maintenance bond. maintenance bond.
Any additional? Gentlemen are satisfied?
Completely confused, but that's okay.
All right.
We'll, we'll just go along with the program.
Expression, what makes this day unlike the others?
There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. DiMillo?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes, item number sixteen is the continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items. I will start with this side of the room, okay? And would anyone wish to speak? On this side of the room, first row, second row, third row. And Mr. Woodworth, just, just again for...
Bruce Woodruff, four oh eight Lanark. Couple of quick things, one is, I want to bring some safety issues to awareness, coming out of the quarry center at the secondary entrances at either end of the, of the property, there are no, no left turn signs there, there are opposite calls, but there isn't at the end of the quarry center, and I have seen two people come out of there, go around, work curves to the right, but make the left, so I think it's something that needs to be looked at, and I don't know whether that was something was overlooked, or, you know, it wasn't part of the plan. Secondly, speaking of Burger King, as you came out of the back entrance of, or exit of Burger King, there's a light standard there, and there used to be a no left-hand turn sign there. The sign, the, excuse me, the light standard was replaced, but the sign was not, and again, with everything that's going on construction-wise and all that kind of stuff, I'm not aware if that was part of, okay, let's make them make the left-hand turn, or not, I mean, it's semantics, it's, you know, it's kind of a crapshoot coming out of there, but fact remains is, that sign was there, and I don't know whether it needs to be looked at again as far as being replaced. The third thing was, as I had asked last meeting about reimbursement regarding our political candidate that came to town, and I'm just curious if we have been reimbursed for the fees yet?
Yes, we were reimbursed.
And I had a whole long dissertation here, and I'm not going to read it. What I want to say is, is after the last meeting, I was able to take advantage of social media, which was, we all know, from this current election, is a powerful tool, and I went on and I expressed my, my disdain for the fact that a certain section of my street was not included on a, an ordinance, come here to find out, even though I was told it would be, it's not, okay? See you tomorrow, social media, but it's amazing that when you go on, you ask for your commissioner's resignation, he knocks on your door the very next day, wanting to talk to you. I wasn't home, okay, but it is amazing. Last time I saw the man at my door, he was knocking on doors, shaking hands, kissing babies, asking for my vote, he got it, he won't the next time. And finally, I'd like to make a statement about the closing comments that you gentlemen are allowed to make at the end of this meeting. To me, in my experience, has come to all these kind of meetings at different towns where I've, I've lived, it's always been how the fire department came and saved Mrs. Murphy's cat out of the tree, or how the Boy Scouts did a car wash, or something like that. The last meeting, we were exposed to an incredible tirade, tirade of hatred. This election has brought out hatred on both sides, Democrat and Republican, and unfortunately, we had a group of kids sitting back here, there, who came to this meeting specifically to see how government was run, and they were given a horrible example, in my opinion. Instead of hearing about the Boy Scouts and Mrs. Murphy's cat, we had to have somebody go on a tirade about the candidate for Republican president, and how he felt as far as what he was, and, and interject his personal opinion on this candidate, the candidate who, by the way, won the election. Bottom line is, is I think we need to make an effort to make sure that this hatred that was spread at the last meeting stops. Take a look at the Trump sign that was right down there at Lawrence and Eagle, and how that was defaced, okay? I have a friend that lives over in Westgate, she's Jewish, she's fearful because of the hate that's going around because of this, this election. Yeah, you can look kind of odd, but I'll tell you, if you want, we're done, I'll tell you the name, okay? She talked to me about it, she had me on the phone for about thirty minutes on Saturday. My point is, the election is over, done, the American people have spoke, we can either do one of two things, we could sit here and grovel all day long because this one cheated, that one did this, this one did that, or we can move on, but I think those kids that were sitting back there are owed an apology for the, for the gross disgust that they were, they were exposed to in that last meeting, and if I can use the word that the Democrat loser used to describe the gentleman, I use that term loosely, who made his little statement, "You, my friend, are deplorable."
Thank you very much for your comments.
Jimmy, right, he really said anti-Trump, I thought he was talking about your comments.
Well, if I may first, please, gentlemen, is there anybody else who wishes to come up and speak? Thank you very much. As far as the quarry shopping center goes, we will look into the left-hand turn signs, the Burger King reimbursement was answered, closing comments is our personal comments, and every commissioner is entitled to personal comments at, at the end of the session. I will now open this up to additional...
I, I just wanted to say that the reason I showed up at your house was to talk to you about the no parking restriction, which you never called me back, or, or anything like that. I didn't show up because you came here, you asked me to help you with a, with a truck restriction, I talked to Sergeant Hagan, we checked and talked to other neighbors in the neighborhood who were confused about it, so I want to explain it to all the neighbors, and I stopped at your house and left my card so that I could explain it to you to what was going on, so you wouldn't come here and be surprised. That's, that's exactly what I did, that's...
There is no back and forth, and, and you know that from, from past meetings, there is no back and forth. If you gentlemen wish to take the conversation any further, when the meeting is over, you have that opportunity.
You can call me anytime, and I'll be glad to talk to you.
Mr. Holmes, did you have something additional?
Ah, no, I mean, we'll get to other business.
Listen, I just want to say one thing, okay? Larry had what he had to say last month, okay, and he was supporting Mrs. Clinton, and I had to say what I had to say, and I was supporting Donald Trump, okay? And as the gentleman said, the election's over, let's get on with it, that's right. But Mr. Holmes came up to me tonight, and this is what we should all be doing out there on the streets, Republican, Democrat, black, white, no matter what, this is what we should be doing, what Larry Holmes did and what I did, we shook hands, Larry said, "Your person won, congratulations," and that's the way it should be. He won, he's in, let's bear with it, let's see what happens, and I hope, I hope and pray he does a great job, and that's all I can say, but that's the way it should be handled, not the differences of hatred and things like that. Larry has his opinion, I have mine, we both express them, but it's over, and we're still friends, I mean, sometimes. Thank you.
Kind of.
President, Mr. President, can I say something about this?
You addressing, answering the questions, yes.
Yeah. I think we're all thankful that the election's over, but I think this township has to make it clear that we will not tolerate any abuse or disrespect of any person in, in Haverford Township, whether they be a member of the gay community, whether they be minorities, anyone, we should make it clear, we will not tolerate that, I don't think the police will tolerate that, I think this board, we're all on board with that, we will not tolerate any, um, I'm sorry?
Hate.
Hate, hate crimes especially. I think that, I think that in order to move forward, we have to make sure that any resident, look, anyone can protest, that's your right, it's your constitutional right to protest, but what is not your right is to destroy property or hurt someone. I think, on the flip side, if we don't, we want, we want no hate crimes, we also don't want anyone to destroy property, that should not happen. I was very glad to see that President-elect Trump did look into, into the camera to tell his supporters, quite frankly, to, to stop what they were doing, and I think this board, the Democrats and Republicans on this board will say to you, the residents, "We take this seriously," so any hate crimes, on the other side, that I think we want, we want residents to know, we won't tolerate it. I think the chief could say a little bit more about that, right? We're talking about any hate crimes, have you seen anything in the township?
We have not, Commissioner, not to my knowledge, we haven't, besides the vandalism, some signs before election, but we haven't had any issues.
There was a letter, too.
Yeah.
There was a letter before the election.
Yes.
But we're, we're not, the township's not going to tolerate anything.
So, you know, anything that would, would happen, as a result of that, we would obviously address that, investigate that fully.
Mr. Siegel? I wasn't going to bring this up, but I think I have to. Today, I received a phone call from constituent elsewhere in the township, not on my word, who had a troubling incident, and the reason of his call was that he reported it to the police in the township, and I told the chief this today, and it was an isolated incident, but it was very troubling, and his call to me, because he knew me, was to thank me and to ask me to convey to the police his thanks for their sensitivity in the way they handled the matter, and that speaks to a major part of this community where, you know, there has been significant insightful language over the last few months, but the police here are respected, and we can't say that everywhere, and this call today sort of reaffirmed, you know, sort of the strength of the community. Yes, they're going to be isolated incidents, I was interviewed about some vandalism that happened in the township that, you know, I take more personally than some others because of my background, but yet, what I told the newscaster, and what I think came out in the piece, was that this is a wonderful community, that when there is something like that that happens, we rally around and support people. We were one of the first to pass a Human Relations Commission ordinance, and even those commissioners on this board who disagreed and voted against it have supported it and made certain that we have placed the best possible people on that body. This is a diverse community, and no community is perfect, but I think we've really done a wonderful job, and the phone call today really, to me, reaffirmed that because it said that, you know, this person had the trust and confidence in our police force in a time when people don't necessarily do, and I was thrilled to be able to tell the chief that today. Okay, I want to close out the continuation of Citizens Forum for Non-Agenda Items, and with this last word, that young Miss Bedard over there, thank you very much for acting like such a lady this evening, you have been very quiet, well behaved, that's a lot, I'll tell you, you've been raised well, and I hope you're very proud of your mom and dad for coming forward and addressing.
Oh, and you fixed her mom's hair so nicely, yeah, I saw you there.
So, that will conclude the, the Citizens Forum, and we will go into item number seventeen, Other Items, and we will start with Commissioner DiMillo.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to thank all of my first-world residents that came out to vote, I mean, it was truly historic, we had some really high-record numbers, and it was very calm, and, you know, people, people couldn't wait to vote, and were anxious about the election, and probably one of the most-watched elections in our country, and thank you all for coming out, that's why we, we, we support our service, men and women, because they give us the right to go out to vote, so thank you for that. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, I hope you enjoy it with your families, we're starting to get into the holidays, believe it or not, my favorite time of year. Can't wait for jingle bells on one of the radio stations, that should be any day now.
It's already on.
What's that?
It's already on.
It's already on. Oh, boy, January second, can't come fast enough, but anyway.
And you look great in that beard and hat.
You like that?
Yeah.
When I go for Toys for Tots?
Yeah.
Which is coming up, I'm sure Jimmy will talk about that.
Toys for Tots, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCluskey?
Sure, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Brooks talked about, the chili trail run that the Haverford Township has, it's through the trails at the crack, and the crack is a great facility, but and the trails they have back in there are excellent, are excellent areas to walk and hike, but also they, the parks and rec has mapped out a very good five K, and it's December third, and it hasn't been too cold yet, so hopefully everybody can come out and participate. As he said, there's also the Cardinal Foley Turkey Trot on November twenty-sixth, that I believe happens at Annunciation, and there's the Reindeer Rump that's in the Oakmont Section, it begins behind the Oakmont School Administration Building on December eleventh, and that starts at three o'clock in the afternoon. This Wednesday at eleven, on, at seven-thirty in this building, Commissioner Siegel and I will have a constituent meeting, and that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel?
I've been telling people it's at seven, so I'm not sure, but there is a constituent meeting here, if you come early, some of us will be here, and the only other thing I want to mention and remind residents is, on, on Election Day, one of the things I did was distribute labels for recycling cans to residents, because the township offers free labels for recycling cans, and they were incredibly popular, I had to come back to the township building to get another bundle, and we went through two bundles of them, so if you have more than one can, even though we give you one when you move in, you can use other cans and put these labels on so that the, you know, the public works, workers know that it's recycling, so come to the township or ask your commissioners, and we will be happy to give you them, because the more things that are recycled, it's the best, it's better for the township, it saves us money, we're not paying to dump, et cetera, so please take advantage of them, I mean, I'm, I don't know how many are in a bundle, Mr. Gentili, but it's, but it seemed like about five hundred, and we probably gave out, I would say, close to a thousand of them, along with about a thousand leafs collection schedules, which, as much as we publicize it every other way, people still like them in paper. Hopefully, they recycle them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis?
Yes, just a couple items, first, again, want to congratulate and acknowledge Ted Rogers for his notable achievement of becoming an Eagle Scout, also want to acknowledge and thank Gail Semerod for being here tonight on behalf of the Haverford Township Adult School, I think she had a very good suggestion that the board might want to consider in the future for our newsletters, and that is to consider profiling, we have so many good charities in this township, from the Grange to the Free Library, to the Historical Society, Haverford Township Adult School, I think it would be great if we, we dedicated maybe a half a page with the newsletter to profile some of our, our charities, our nonprofits that are doing such good work in this township.
All their firefighters.
Yeah, there's so many different charities that we should be acknowledging and giving people an opportunity to, to, in the community, to understand what they, their mission, and give them the opportunity to give, and to contribute, whether it be money or time, so I just make that suggestion, and the board can consider that. The third item is just a reminder to residents to keep the leaves off the street in the fifth ward and throughout the township, that continues to be a problem in my ward, it clogs up the stormwater inlets, and so just encourage residents to keep, keep the leaves in their yard and above the curb. And then finally, just want to update people, update residents on the College Avenue Bridge closure, it was supposed to close on the fifteenth, it hasn't closed yet, I, there's still some work that's being done, or as Ralph Brown mentioned, on Haverford and Ordmore Avenue, and I think, you know, once that work gets done, which is supposed to be today, and they're supposed to do some paving, I think, so the patchwork sometime in the next couple of weeks, so that project is going to be delayed, I think, till probably the end of November, in terms of, they're going to give a two-week, a two-week notice, a posting on the bridge that says, "In two weeks, the bridge will be closed," so that residents will certainly be given adequate notice, but that delay continues to move, unfortunately, so, because I think we're all anxious to get it underway and get it behind us, so that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes?
Just want to acknowledge how many people did turn out and vote on Election Day, it was, it was in my lifetime record turnout here in Haverford Township, and, and for anybody, and I think all of us probably stayed out all day for those thirteen hours, it was actually a very pleasant day, you know, we all, both sides of the aisle, had kind of feared some things happening on Election Day, and frankly, it was one of the nicest, and yet, one of the busiest days we had, so it would be great if every day after that follows, as, as well as that day went, we've all... as that day went. We've all, we all had our concerns before the election. Some of us expressed them, some of us just thought them. But it is a new day, and we have a new, we have a new president, and we need to, we need to proceed forward. I will never apologize for using my, what I consider my duty up here, to, to speak my mind on things that I think are that important. I do think in 11 years, I've never exercised that duty before, so it gave some people some indication of, of how strongly I felt about it. But I'm not here strangling Jimmy or demanding that anybody recount any votes. So onward and upward as we go. I appreciate my colleagues on the board, and the township manager and the solicitor, working with me for us to try to address the issues at 2508 Chestnut Avenue. And I appreciate the neighbors and residents of Chestnut Avenue who advocated for this position. And I hope we can act quickly and try to make up for, for some lost time for these folks. So that is all I have, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you very much. Mr. McG, yeah, McGarret?
Yes. Number one, the Toys for Tots, they are starting to distribute them around to the different township buildings, and around to the different township facilities, the police station, in Brookline, Harford Township Gym, McGillicuddy's. There's a few other, I think, the IDN does it. There's quite a few places.
My office?
Dan Siegel's office, the Crack. They have it up there, Tim, the Crack. They have it down at the library, I said that. And they're just all over town. And basically, I don't have the date for that yet. I think it's going to be around Friday the night. And Santa will be there for the kids, when they bring their toys for the kids that are, that just need them for Christmas time. There are a lot of children from Chester and places like that, that don't really have a Christmas, and we try to provide them with a good Christmas. And I need help on the board with one of the commissioners, who's going to take up the lunch for the township workers? Mario, is he?
Who, Bill?
All right, Bill's doing that, and I'll do the Toys for Tots. So we have a luncheon for the township workers and the administration building every year, and that'll continue year after year, we hope. So with that, and please, take your children down to the Grange and see the trains. They will be having, their Christmas party this year is going to be on the 8th of December. And it's a great party. You ought to see all the things they decorate, they've built it up with, and it's a wonderful party. Last year, there was over 100 people in it. They have musicians there and different things like that. It's a, it's a fine night out, and it's, it's not very costly. It's only $25. So that's the 8th of December. And, and of course, the trains will be all through December, all the weekends, week of four. So with that, that was your time.
Thank you. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I, this Thursday night, at the Hilltop Civic Association meeting, we'll be having a follow-up meeting to discuss the changes that are being proposed along Township Line Road. There was a meeting at St. Dorothy's School Hall on November 3rd with Senator McGarregal and State Representative Santoro, myself, Mayor Tom Makozi of Upper Darby, and Deputy Chief Hagan represented our police department that, that evening. So we'll be having a follow-up to get some more input. As basically, some of you know, that PennDOT's proposed a plan, and we, as local officials, want to gather input from the community before finalizing a plan with PennDOT. We have until November 30th to provide any comments to them. So it's Thursday, Thursday night at Bonner Fire Hall. We'll have a chance to review it, discuss it, and talk about the next steps that are going to happen with the project that's coming in this spring. And I want to thank the police department for their participation, as well as my co-type of people and the council members in Upper Darby. It's, it's an amazing thing. The funding has already been approved. 1.57 million was appropriated a week and a half ago. Governor Wolf approved the plan, and basically, it's going to, safety and traffic calming from State Road to Westchester Pike. State Road being down Drexel Line Shopping Center all the way up to Westchester Pike. In a quick nutshell, we're going to have a turn, center turn lane all along that, that whole section of Township Line. It'll be repaved, restripped, new signage, the newer, modern, larger speed signs, the radar signs in, in two or three places to alleviate your speed. And then a lot of lobbying up in Harrisburg to give our police officers radar locally. So, so again, Thursday night at 7:30. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Mr. Oliva?
Yeah, just to add on to that, I saw Commissioner Wexler, the Jamie Santoro being able to get everyone together there and be able to pull that together to, and get the appropriation so quickly. So, no, he deserves a, a hand for, for doing that, so.
I think he was happy with the First and Ninth Ward's turnout and...
Yeah, he was, very happy.
...votes for him, so thank you.
So, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, the HPD has their annual meet-and-greet meeting up at the Crack. It is tomorrow, November 14th, from 7 to 9. Business owners, residents, you know, we, we, we're going to have a presentation to talk about what, you know, what this group is doing, the HPD and the township together are doing to improve business and beautification of this township. And that will be tomorrow, again, tomorrow from 7 to 9. And then during the regular meeting in January, we will have a presentation for the board on some of the things, an update on some of the things that we're doing, like, I don't know if you've noticed, along Manoa Road, along, you know, Brookline Boulevard, along some of those, our business districts, we are making a lot of improvements, and we'll go over some of those. So, other than that, I did have, I did have a letter from a gentleman. I forgot to bring the letter. I did not ask him for permission. So I just will say that he was very happy with what was done along Manoa Road. He's a business owner there in Manoa Road, and he is just very happy that the township and the HPD have, have collaborated to make the changes and, and help his business, which in, in this environment is struggling, and, and just try to get people in, into the business districts and make people aware. So, and I have nothing further.
Thank you. And Mr. Gentili, I'd like to offer you an opportunity, if you'd like to say anything?
No, I don't. I have nothing to offer, other than it's a busy time for our Public Works Department. It's probably the most stressful time because of leaf season. So if you can just bear with the Public Works Department, who they get through this difficult challenge. So we should be done, hopefully, in about another six weeks.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. And to remind everybody that this Board of Commissioners, the governing body of Harford Township, is a government by the people. And all the members on this board, their voices in the past have expressed great appreciation for many people of the community and surrounding communities, be they individual organizations, boards, commissions, whatever the case may be. And also, at times, this board has given their personal expression of passion. And everybody has the opportunity to do that. This is a wonderful country. Yes, we should work together. And the best way to do that is with an open mind and mutual respect. And everybody needs to express that for everyone else. That's the only time we really can work together. I just want to say that this board has expressed themselves in many ways. And nobody coming up here to this podium has to apologize, nor does anybody from this board. But this month is, has an Election Day, it has Veterans Day, and it has Thanksgiving Day. Three things that this country absolutely has everything about itself, the elections, a voice of the people, because our veterans go out and fight for us, for democracy, all over the world, and we have, which gives us that opportunity to vote. And the numbers that came out and did that, thank you. And I'm sure that it expresses on how this country feels. So look at the situation. It is what we are. And it's Thanksgiving, we should all sit down, and I know you will sit at a table that will be made up of a diverse table. I know in my house it is. But no matter what the diversity is, we are who we are, and we should be very, very thankful for that. And let's move forward with an open mind and with respect towards each other. Thank you very, very much for attending this evening. Our next meeting of the, with the public will be the budget meeting on November 21st. Here in this room, at 7:00 PM, will be the buzz and present, budget presentation for 2017. I will entertain. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.